This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 11, 2024. This is the zoning board of appeals for the city of East Hampton. This evening, we are both hybrid and in person, with in-person presence by the applicant as well as online through Google Meet. First order of business, is there anyone here who needs to speak with anything that's not currently on the agenda for this evening? Hearing no responses, we will move on. Do we have any?
No, man.
Okay, so our hearing is 385 and 391 Main Street, the community builders. Applicant is seeking a comprehensive permit to create eighty-seven new and rehabilitate forty existing affordable rental units, subject to Mass General Law, Chapter 40B. The applicant is proposing three new buildings on fifty-five point five-four acres. The proposal is located at 385 and 391 Main Street and is zone R thirty-five zoning district. This is a continuation of a hearing that was already started. So with that, we will continue.
Right. So before you folks in your packet, I have here the, just kind of outlining where we've been at since our last meeting. So we have the draft decision that was prepared by Attorney Haverty. Again, all that's written is affirmative. We'll read through that tonight. Kind of go through, see if there's points in there that are fine. If there's things that we would like to change or be clarification on. We also have Attorney Haverty here online with us to answer any questions. The draft decision, I've had that reviewed by both FIRE and DPW. I have comments from both of them in there. We have both the Director of DPW, Greg Nudelman, online as well as Christopher Norris, the Chief of FIRE. If there are any questions. As well, we've sent it over to the Conservation Commission as well to review. We got that to them, say, within the last, this week. So we're not expecting a comment on them immediately. We're really just looking to see if they've got any, they have their own process to handle for the stormwater permit. So they will also be reviewing this independently of us as well. Since we've gotten there, and then after that, we've got the draft decision for review.
I guess let's start with the folks that are online. I know I did receive an email from Greg Nudelman today. But if you're, if Greg, if you're available, if we could discuss your questions or concerns.
Greg, you're a contributor, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I think I'm having a little trouble with my internet connection here.
Worried about, we're having a little trouble with sound too, so let me. Go ahead, Greg. All right, go ahead, Greg.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So I discussed the stormwater concerns we have with our city engineer earlier today. And we are looking forward to working through them with the Conservation Commission as part of their process. And I did notice in the waiver request packet, there was some language in there regarding the applicant's willingness to comply with any technical requirements we have regarding connections to the water and sewer utilities. So I find that to be very satisfactory from a DPW standpoint. You know, we do recognize the concerns with the stormwater and we are willing to, are looking forward to getting, you know, more involved and helping Berkshire kind of drill down on what we need to do to get some compliant stormwater, compliant stormwater system out there.
Okay. And so with that, the, applications can go to Conservation Commission, at which point Conservation will work to accomplish an act of stormwater plan. I guess on my, I guess my question could then go to Steve Haverty concerning the, the process of, you know, closing out this hearing, would that still open?
Do you like me to address that?
Yeah, you could. Paul, I'm sorry.
You shouldn't be closing the public hearing with, with any outstanding items still remaining for the board to review. If it's a circumstance where you can address it through a condition, that's absolutely appropriate. At the end of the day, you are going to have the opportunity to review final plans. So if you can, if you can include a condition that requires submittal of final plans showing some sort of update, that is appropriate.
Okay. That was, that's really, that, that as a board, I think that's a concern that we have. Obviously, we have stipulations set forward by the state as a timeframe that we have to maintain. If, if there is delay because of another commission, you know, what, what burden does that put on us? But we can put in a condition that says we must meet, they must meet the requirements necessary by the Conservation Commission, at which point we can close first and hold off that.
Right, and the board can't require an applicant to complete other permitting before issuing a comprehensive permit. It's always an applicant's right to wait to do other permitting until after a comprehensive permit has been issued. Because it's, that's sort of the, the expensive part of the process is the comprehensive permit process. And an applicant is entitled to hold off, if it so chooses, in getting subsequent permitting until it knows whether or not it's going to get an approval on the comprehensive permit. So a condition requiring compliance with White Lines Protection Act by the DEP, Title V, if, you know, if this weren't on sewer, things of that nature. It's absolutely appropriate to just include a condition requiring subsequent compliance.
Okay. Excellent. Does any other board members have questions concerning that scenario or requirement in order for us to be in our schedule? Okay. Very straightforward. All right. Thank you very much. And then, I guess, we see correspondence between Deputy Constantine of the East Hampton Fire Department and the applicants concerning some design and requirements or requests that have been made. And Chief Norris, are you looking to speak to that?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, um, thank you. We've had some correspondence, both with yourself, Dylan, as well as Julia. And I know the main point in contact was Dan Constantine, couldn't be here tonight. But essentially, my communications with Dan was just talking about, number one, the access road going around the backside there of the complex. Initially, that road was proposed to be twelve feet wide of paved. And then through communication with Julie, it's our understanding that's going to be four feet of additional width on each side with graph pavers. So is that correct?
The applicant is applying, yes.
Okay. And that's fine. We don't have a problem with that. I just want, I wanted to understand that when you talk about that access road being twelve feet wide and then, and that kind of goes also into that turnaround. It's our understanding that that turnaround is going to be reinforced turf. So these, these vehicles you're talking about, an engine weighs twenty tons and your typical ladder truck weighs forty ton. So two things, as long as that reinforced turf that's being proposed to us can support that type of weight. And then secondly, as long as both that access road and that turnaround are maintained year round, particularly during the winter time. That's our biggest concern going forward with those access roads and that turnaround.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it all does.
All right. Um. Do you have a question?
I'd like to be listened to, but with the reinforced turf, does, can it be subject to excessive rain and getting soggy?
No, I mean, there's a number of different manufacturers.
I had a question about this integrity of reinforced turf with a lot of extra rain and whether a lot of them still support the twenty or forty ton vehicles.
Yeah, there's a number of different manufacturers of products available, but it's like one that, you know, compare the weight of both vehicles, but be on a, some base that would, you know, be stable enough to support those vehicles over time. So, yeah.
Yeah, and it would be helpful if I could just have those specifications emailed to us as well. And then again, the understanding in terms of year round upkeep and maintenance, particularly during the winter time for snow removal. Additionally, we had communications with Julie about access, looking at the rear access from this back road for the rear of the buildings, particularly for a ramp for our stretchers. When I ran a quick analysis of a comparison to other similar structures in East Hampton, we're looking at approximately no less than a hundred calls a year there for EMS calls. So that would be important in terms of just having navigable access for both our stretchers and our ambulance through that. And, and Julia, it looks like she's saying that there will be a ramp back there as well.
Yeah, and, um, we have to get around, yes, we will be maintaining that access road all year round. And then on the number of calls, I know that data was pulled from our abiding site, which is a senior property. So would you see an increased number of calls to a site with that population? This, this new project is family housing, so different populations. So we see overall, we, you know, own and maintain other properties, populations. We see a much lower number, number of calls, you know, at the same site. But of course, we'll have the revving and the access and the accessibility.
Dylan, if you could just repeat that, that audio was pretty choppy coming through on this end.
Give me just one moment here. You can all bear with me for a second. The audio for this is not coming through the TV. Give me just a second, see if I can figure that out. Potentially, but here we go.
Can you go ahead? Can you go ahead and say something, Chief Norris? Can you hear you?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you better now.
Excellent. All right. If you want to go ahead and repeat that response.
Hi, Chief Norris. So, yes, there will be a ramp. Yes, we will be maintaining that access road and pathways and access to the buildings year round. And then to the number of calls, I know the data was pulled from our nearby college highway apartments, which is a senior property. So we tend to see much higher levels of call, calls at properties that serve those populations. This property will be a family housing, so while seniors may live there, it's a mix, a mix of folks. So properties that, with this population, we see a much lower level of call volume than we see at our senior properties across TCB's portfolios. We would expect to see the same here as well. Thank you.
Sorry, there was a question.
Sorry, I'm sorry. If you have a question, we will ask the questions from the public, the, you know, we'll, we'll have any follow up questions.
Well, if you're just potentially conditioned that the access road will be maintained year round, potentially conditioned about final approval for the plans that are on the road by the fire department? The board, yes. Oh, wonderful.
All right. Did the board have any other questions for the, all right, Chief?
One more question, it was about the sprinkler.
Okay. And what would that be? Or is that? Okay. There was another question concerning the sprinkling of the existing building.
Yes.
In, in the renovation that will.
Yes, and everything will be that sprinklers that building, when it is real.
Okay. I will now, uh, we can, if there's anyone in the applicant party, as we will call you, who has anything they would like to add or, or support, anything else that has been brought up throughout the course.
I think we're all set, but I do know our partner, Kestrel Land Trust, wanting, was wanting to speak.
Okay. Oh, it looks like Freeman wants to join.
Yeah, and I believe Mark is wanting to speak.
Mark, your contributor, you should be able to just unmute yourself and let me go ahead and make Attorney Freeman a contributor as well. Yep, you should be good to go.
Excellent. You want me to go first?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Did you hear me? Great. Good to see everyone again. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. Yeah, I'm glad we've gotten to this point. I've been following along a little bit as I've been on sabbatical with some of the concerns and questions that have arisen. And I just want to assure everyone from Kestrel's point of view that as we've gone through this process from the beginning with both TCB and Berkshire Design, we really tried to take the utmost care, particularly around issues of wetlands and stormwater. Again, from the very beginning, we really strive to minimize the footprint and the impermeable surfaces throughout the site as much as we can. And again, we think this is really a good outcome for the site and we hope you agree. And we hope, you know, the additional information that we can provide can answer any remaining questions that you have. But thanks again.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. First apologies, your website, I have to say, is confusing because I went on the website and the first place it said to join, it said only as a viewer. So I said, that's strange. So I went to the agenda and the agenda did have a totally different link, but it wouldn't let me in. So I apologize. I've been waiting for somebody to let me in. And then, and then Julia just sent me this link again, which it turns out you can admit me. So sorry about that. In any case, I'll be brief. We are here to go over the decision. The decision was drafted by Paul Haverty and he is here by Zoom. And we have gone over it and I think are in substantial, perhaps even just about a hundred percent agreement. I think my client, Julia Scanell, had a couple of comments on it or changes. But our hope is that we will go through the decision tonight and be able to close the hearing. Naturally, if you have any questions about any of the presentations or plans, we're also here for that. But our hope is that we will go through the draft decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now ask if there's anyone from the public who has any questions, follow up questions or concerns that they would like to add. If you do, please step forward. We will be limiting these topics to about three minutes per person. And we ask that you do not duplicate any things that have been said, you know, it's a previous person or most recent people have said things. We ask that you just not repeat them over and over again. Go ahead, state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Heather Wiesonski, twenty-two over the threshold. So I will actually ask the, the board not to approve and end this hearing tonight. There are a number of issues that have come up over the course of the last several months that I would relate to the oops factor. Unfortunately, those oops keep happening over and over again and they appear to be a lack of detail, attention to detail. So first, it was the error with the Notice to Abouters. Then it was an error in the Notice to Abouters for the Conservation Commission hearings where there was, the information was wrong on what was being built. The letter actually says forty-five units and not eighty-seven units. And then the groundwater plan was reviewed recently by an Abouter and the Commission, Conservation Commission was provided with some details about some significant errors that, that are in that stormwater plan that need to be corrected. And one of the things can't be corrected all that easily because the, some of the testing is supposed to be done between November and April and it wasn't done between November and April. So therefore, they can't even do it until November to be able to assess the groundwater level appropriately to do that stormwater plan. I have copies of the letter that was sent to the Conservation Commission because I think you should know about what was written to the Conservation Commission and that the delay by the Conservation Commission is not due to them delaying it. It was errors in the stormwater plan that need to be corrected and can't be corrected until after November, at this point, I don't think. So I would ask that we delay closing this hearing. I find it frustrating that a plan was developed for a letter to sign off on without hearing from the public completely, as if this was a done deal without appropriate input and without finishing a public hearing. I think that's inappropriate and it devalues the input from the public. Additionally, there was information provided at the Conservation Commission the other night about a volume issue on Main Street where, for the sewer, where there was an over volume when Big Y and some of the other buildings were added several years ago. And a plan was put in place to extend the sewer system down to where the, like path is, to alleviate some of the pressure volume and that change was never completed. So if there's already an over volume because of what is existing there, what is going to happen to that sewer system once these units come online without additional repairs or capacity being added to those sewer systems? We're going to look at potential catastrophic failure. We already have an aging sewer system. That line over there is pretty old to begin with and it does not appear that it can handle capacity. I would like to provide this to the, the board for their review and I would ask that a vote not be happening tonight. Copies for each of you?
Mr. Chairman, Peter Freeman again. If you'd like me to respond now or wait till other comments, but I would like to respond naturally.
We'll wait, you know, we'll let everyone speak and then we'll, we'll bring it back to you.
Sure. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public with any questions or concerns?
My name's Ken Best. I live at twelve Two Hard Drive, which is on the other side of the street. I did go to the conservation meeting and listened to all that they were talking about. And one of the plans that I thought was not very good was, you know, the parking lot, they're going to have a big, you know, lane for runoff that create a little pond, so somewhere to go. And if that don't work, there will never be underground tanks or some underground spot for the water. And then where I live on across the street, you can't dig a hole, you dig a hole two feet deep and it fills up with water and it's there for days. It just doesn't go anywhere. So if they start adding water and ponds of water over there, it's, it's going to start leaking. They've got a high water table anyway and there's no way to get rid of it. But everybody on the street has a pump and a cellar. So if they don't get rid of the water, it's going to get worse for us. And, and I asked about how they're going to deal with the street, where the stormwater is going to go. It's just, you're going to have to end up digging up the street and putting a bigger place for a stormwater blow. And who pays for that? We all pay for it. And this is the first, I'm hearing of this going on bottom of the call. So all this plan is ready to be approved and I've never had any, any news about it. I haven't really gone, maybe it's in the papers, but I work all day. I don't read all day, but I was on the paper. But that's one. Another thing is even when it was known for putting a building project in there, nobody, nobody asked me if it was okay to build it over there. I didn't hear anything about it. Maybe you don't have to, but I didn't hear anything about it. You can do whatever they want, I guess, but how does that get? My, my, yes, it's on R thirty-five. Where I live is R thirty-five also. Would that be the same zoning?
Yes.
Because I wanted to build a garage behind my house and I couldn't do it because I'd been on rough property to do it. So, I mean, that's, that's one. So, and the other part is even the water. Now, you're going to add eighty-seven units over there and probably two or three people on each unit. That's a lot of people. That's probably close to a hundred fifty, two hundred people. Where's all the water coming from? You're going to have to increase the water over there? So if they're all taking a shower and they, we're not going to get any water. Somebody's going to increase the air pressure? How does that work? There's something I would be real concerned about. I can't see, I can't see improving this because there's so many unanswered questions. You know, I mean, you don't have to worry about power because a public company will give you power no matter where you go. You know, that's, that's one thing. And, and the last thing I have is what the traffic. Eighty-seven units is at least eighty-seven yards. And you can't even get out of Shore Drive right now as it is. So somebody planning out a traffic lane over there so that we can get out? It's really hard to get out of our street. And then to top it off, everybody's going to be a big wash. All those people are going to be shopping next door and there's no other place in town that's, that's affordable, sorry. And we got to stop and shop because they want to go in and that, that, for whatever reasons, for conservation and all kinds of other things. So now that we don't have enough, I don't think there's enough shopping areas in town for these people to go shopping. I just, eighty-seven units is ridiculous. And, and I may not see the units, the whole farther up the street from me, so I may not see it directly from my house. But I moved in here because it was a nice quiet street and I have a lot of neighbors and I was in the sights. That's why I moved in here. So now you're changing all, the whole atmosphere where I moved into. And as far as I'm concerned, it's going to drop the value on my house. There's nobody's going to live next to a project with eighty-seven people. The seniors isn't, I just, enough. I mean, it's okay. They don't bother you. You know, but all the rest of that, that's just too much. I don't think you should throw this off.
Can you repeat your? Can you repeat your name?
Ken Best.
Thank you. And what was your, where's your address?
Twelve Two Hard Drive. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your concerns.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Powell Wilson. I'm at three seventy-seven Main Street and I just want to express, I won't go into the detail, but I still do have concerns about the traffic and flooding. I'm trying to get out of my driveway and it's very difficult. This is before anybody's moving in. The other thing is that every year I get a little lake on my front property. Right in the front. It's already having problems. So how are we going to do? How are we going to address this, the flooding issue? You know, maybe you're addressing it and I've heard people say, oh, well, it'll go off into that northeast area, the Culver. We don't know where it is, but it's over there. Yeah, on my property, it's over there. So if you're not really taking care, care of it, it's going to affect other areas and other people and will be a significant impact, traffic wise and flooding wise. I know there was talk also, I'm going to move to a different topic, related to invasives. I know there was a concern about the invasives is related. You're going to pull those out? Those have taken ten, twenty years to grow. They're helping to prevent the erosion. You pull them out to get something else? They're not going to grow in. They're not going to grow in. There's that hedge row that's preventing, you know, also helps with the management of the water. So again, focusing on one issue and then creating more issues. It just, we got to look at the whole picture and it doesn't look too good. So that's just what I want to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your concerns. Thank you very much for your concerns. Is there anybody online that has any questions or things they'd like to add?
Nope. Everyone online are all just part of the meeting.
All right. Mr. Freeman, you'd ask for a chance to add any commentary to questions that were posed or comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first, as to the last couple of speakers on traffic, that's been adequately addressed by our traffic report and reviewed by you and town departments and commented on. So I don't think that concerns that have been raised really rise to the level of refuting what has been submitted by professionals, number one. Number two, on the question of stormwater, and in particular with the Conservation Commission, likewise, your departments have reviewed our stormwater plans. You have, you asked questions. We've had good testimony from our expert on the subject, the designer of the system. And with the Conservation Commission, although that process is not completed, it is not at all required before the completion of a comprehensive permit application and the granting of a permit that Conservation Commission be completed. In fact, the state regulations under the Department of Environmental Protection, State Wetlands Protection Act, actually say that the protocol is supposed to be that you get all your other permits before you go to the Conservation Commission. And that's usually because you want to have your final plans approved by the zoning entity, in this case, the zoning board on a comprehensive permit application before you go to the Conservation Commission. So naturally, there would have to be a condition in your permit, if you grant it, that says it is subject to obtaining the necessary order of conditions under the State Wetlands Protection Act. And that is normal. It's routine because I can tell you from experience that I would roughly say the majority, well over half of the projects that I work on, simply do not even apply to the Conservation Commission until after they get their comprehensive permit. So it's a developer's risk if for some reason the Conservation Commission with the third-party review that's gonna take place is not satisfied. And we, by the way, believe that we will be able to satisfy the, any concerns that have been raised. But that is a developer's risk. Also, just to make clear, my understanding is that the third-party review that was completed so far, and I believe the speaker did say this, it was not by a company or engineer hired by the Conservation Commission or anyone else in the town. It was by the neighbor, which is certainly their prerogative. I just want to make clear that that report that was mentioned by the first speaker was not something that had been requested by the Conservation Commission. And I do believe that they have now retained their own consultant as a peer reviewer. So we would just say respectfully that that is not a reason to delay the closing of the hearing and taking a vote. Thank you.
Have you seen the memo that was introduced?
No, I have not.
Yes.
Catherine Wazinski, twenty-two overall drive. So no, that, that report, that was not requested by somebody, but it was submitted by a water engineer who happens to live in the neighborhood and a butter, and a butter. But he is qualified to do that assessment, and there were significant issues with that stormwater plan. Now, to say that the vehicle traffic is not sufficient enough to raise a concern because it was addressed by specialists doesn't take into account the concerns of the neighborhood and the other community members. That's adding a significant amount of trips every day to our roads. And I do not believe that the just like the stormwater analysis was not sufficient, I don't believe the traffic study was sufficient and addresses the needs of our communities.
Thank you. Absolutely. We're, we're gonna take a few minutes just to read this report because this is the first time we've seen it. So.
You took a quick question? Is there any way that we can see this study that was done on the traffic report? Because as I said, we can't even get out of the street. So if they think it's normal, that's okay. It's really not.
The, the traffic study, I believe all information that has been provided by the applicant, any studies, any design, everything, has been posted on our website. Yep. And the, the study only reflects the, the, any difference in traffic from today on what impact this development will have. Okay, that is what the study was asked to do, and that's what it does.
It sounds like there's, they don't think there's gonna be any problem at all.
I don't think they're saying there's not gonna be any problem. What they're saying is it's not gonna be significant enough to require any additional signaling or road improvements.
Well, it's the same thing. They're not gonna do anything. We're not gonna be able to get out of the street. Can't get out of it now. It's taken a long time, but we can't do traffic. It's hard to get out of the street. They're gonna add eighty-seven more cars. It's sorry, it's just, it's just a setup.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way for that document to be posted? Because I did not get it. I don't believe my client got it, and naturally you want to read it, but I would like an opportunity to read it.
Is there an electronic copy of this letter? You do have it?
I just sent it to you.
All right. Peter, it should be coming your way.
Thank you.
And if I might, just apart from the first year's design group, if I might just let you know where we are in the process in response to this letter and subsequent conversations with city engineers that, you know, as, as with any peer review, this is the job of the peer reviewers that hope holds in any engineering plan. So and I'll just put that out there that there's a number of these comments that, you know, are, are, you know, not as, as big of an issue as others. There's some, some, some comments in there that certainly, you know, we're taking a closer look at. And so we've been working with city engineer and our announced staff to, to address all these comments. The Conservation Commission is equally aware of them and, you know, as, as was noted, has hired a third-party reviewer, you know, on behalf of the, of the city. And so we'll be working with them to, to address, you know, any concerns they have as well as, you know, these comments. But we have been working, you know, over the last several weeks to, to respond to these comments, and we're close to having a final plan, but want to have all, you know, all the Ts crossed and Is dotted before we, you know, present that. But we, we can adequately address, you know, any of the concerns. So I think a lot of those will go away with a, with a new plan. So just to put that out there that, you know, that will be, you know, a substantial enough change that a lot of these comments will be irrelevant. But that's just to let you know where that process is at.
Yes.
So just because I've noticed a continuing issue with you guys getting information from other departments and the same, the planning board. The Conservation Commission hasn't hired a third-party peer review yet. They can't until they have a new design, and they don't have that yet. So it hasn't gone on for our fee. There hasn't been somebody hired yet. Just trying to clarify that.
Just get clarification probably from our attorney over what is our jurisdiction in terms of doing comprehensive permit versus what is the Conservation Commission's? Ultimately, if we have the rights to hire a third-party consultant, which I think during training was mentioning we could.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you, you do have the right to hire a third-party consultant, but your jurisdiction is only over the local wetlands regulations. It is not over issues that are covered under the Wetlands Protection Act. That jurisdiction resides solely with the Conservation Commission.
And they would also have jurisdiction over the local wetlands?
Not, not in this instance because this is a comprehensive permit application. This board has sole jurisdiction over local wetlands requirements.
How about aspects of flooding?
Again, if there are local requirements, then you have jurisdiction. If it's just state requirements, then it's the Conservation Commission.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are no waivers that were required related to any local regulations related to the Conservation Commission. So it's purely under the state act.
Could you, could you repeat that, Mr. Freeman? Your, your connection wasn't good there.
Sorry, sorry. As Mr. Haverty said, the State Wetlands Protection Act is solely under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It's not subsumed within the forty B process. And we have not asked for any waivers related to anything that is a local regulation related to Conservation Commission. So it's solely in the domain of the Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act.
So again, we have a copy of any wetland act that the city has?
We have. It's our stormwater permit application, which is also handled by the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board typically, which for the most part is just a taking of the, what's in state regulations.
So there's no, the city of East Hampton does not have any specific wetland restrictions or requirements that are in, in, in excess or, or more stringent than the state?
Not to my knowledge, but it's something that we could get an answer on more specifically, but offhand, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly where the differences would be when the state regulation versus our stormwater permit, where they would diverge. Typically, I know it's very common, like in our variance is just reiterating what state law is. There's no deviation. But I can't answer that at this time of whether or not ours is exactly the same as the wetlands protection.
So, sorry. As I'm learning more about all of this stuff, it's my understanding that there is a slight difference between what is required in our ordinances for number of inches between the high level of groundwater and the stormwater management system, and the current plan doesn't meet that requirement. And we won't know what the requirement is because we don't know what the high level of groundwater is because the test needs to be done between November and April, and it wasn't.
Mr. Chairman?
One minute, please, Mr. Freeman.
To, to the extent, for what?
Go ahead, go ahead.
To the extent, to the extent that the last speaker just made a comment about a possibly more stringent requirement in the local bylaw. If that's the case, we're complying. Again, it's not something that we've asked the zoning board to take action on. If we had, then I can understand perhaps wanting to take more time related to the stormwater issues. But it's all within the domain of the Conservation Commission, and we will have to comply with what they require, including if applicable, a more stringent local regulation unless they, unless they waive it on their own. But we're not asking the zoning board to do that, which is why I do continue to say that the process that is being by the Conservation Commission efficient. Again, it's the typical majority of forty B, just that those Conservation Commission matters are not completed, not completed before the comprehensive permit application is handled and a decision is made. And again, it is a significant difference that, and, and relevant to support what I'm saying, that we're not asking the zoning board to take action on anything related to local Conservation Commission regulations. Thanks.
Thank you.
That is to happen after we issue the permits of those issues. I'll come up with the Conservation Commission after we're done.
Yeah.
So you can't, we can't hold up this because of that, because that can't happen until after we're done. Right?
Chicken egg.
What we could do, Mr. Chair, is my understanding is we do, this body does have the authority to waive the local regulations for stormwater. I don't, the applicant isn't asking us to, nor do I think it would be a good idea to do so, but we could do something like a condition saying that as part of this, as part of their Conservation Commission application, that they would have to get the regular stormwater permit that any other project would be subject to, so they'd still be through the Conservation Commission. We usually issues these types of stormwater permits with local regulations as well as state regulations. It would still go through that normal process, and they'd have to get that regular stormwater permit that meets local regulations.
So they would have to meet when and or exceed local or state regulation, whichever is more stringent?
Correct. And then we'd be having that process navigated by the folks who typically do that as opposed to getting everybody here up to speed on our, our, our local stormwater regulation. Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
We certainly make that a condition.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We can double check that actually with, with Attorney Haverty. If, did, did all I say make sense? Is that something we, we can do before I?
It does make sense, however, it is not something that you can do. So the, the Board of Appeals issues all local permits under a comprehensive permit application. So that means that once you issue your decision, you are issuing all local approvals necessary. You can't defer an approval to a different board or commission. But what you can do is include a, a condition that requires compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act. And you, we could think about wrapping a condition that suggests that the Conservation Commission review compliance with the local bylaw as well. And if they make a determination that there is not compliance, that the applicant has to come back and modify the decision in order to bring it into compliance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. And thank you, Paul, but I, I don't agree a hundred percent. It's certainly a comprehensive permit that stands in the shoes of other permits that are normally issued. But if an applicant by its own volition and choice does not ask for a waiver from something that is otherwise applicable with, in this case, the Conservation Commission, then it does not mean, the permit being issued does not mean that we still bypass the Conservation Commission. A condition can go further than what you said. It can say that, as I already stated, and I believe as the board member just said, which I agree with, that there can be a condition that says, subject to obtaining the permission of the Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection, Protection Act and any applicable local bylaw.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully disagree with Attorney Freeman on that. This board holds exclusive jurisdiction on compliance with local requirements. The fact that the applicant is not requesting any waivers from the, the local bylaw should provide some comfort to this board, but you are still issuing a permit under that local bylaw when you issue your decision. So my recommendation will continue to be, you know, you can issue it subject to a condition that the applicant obtain approval under the Wetlands Protection Act and that requests review by the Conservation Commission for compliance with the local bylaw in that they would have to come back if there, if it was determined that there isn't compliance.
That, that would be acceptable. I may be parsing words too much, in which case I apologize, but that would be acceptable, Paul.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Come back to us. Does that mean come back to us or back to the Conservation Commission?
No, once, once the Conservation Commission was finished, if it was determined that they didn't in fact need a waiver or, or needed relief from a restriction that is in the conservation bylaw, they would have to come back to us for approval of that relief.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all understanding what we're getting ourselves into. Any further questions, concerns, thoughts?
We're defaulting, talking about wetlands. Lumping that with stormwater, because I still feel like there's an issue raised about the impact of stormwater off-site, to what degree that's
That is all, that is all under the wetlands. It's all, it's stormwater and wetlands and everything. It's conservation. And meeting the, you know, Wetlands Act, the Conservation Commission oversees that. Commission oversees that, stormwater.
Dude, there's no wetlands, they still oversee stormwater?
They still oversee stormwater. All right. So that in mind, you know, we can go ahead and we can put conditions in a decision that would require approval by the Conservation Commission that then says if they need any relief from local bylaws, they would have to come back and seek approval by this board. Am I correct in that? And you're agreeing that? Paul agrees with that? Everybody?
Yes.
We will add that as a condition.
Do you approve of Concom for applied bylaws? They, and relieve it by a reopening of public hearing?
Now, does reopening of that public hearing, that does not have to be done within the initial open, close decision, everything of the 40B application?
The condition would require the applicant to come back for a modification, which is a new process. And again, i- if that modification is determined to be insubstantial, it wouldn't even require a public hearing. It would simply require this board to determine that it's insubstantial. If the board determines it is substantial, then a duly noticed public hearing would be held, subject to the same terms as this original hearing process.
Okay. So we all, I want to make sure everybody understands what's, what we're approving, because that's the important, as it comes down to it, what is in paper, what's written here, is what we really want. You have that. If you added the other, we have someone else who has one.
I had a question regarding what you said, substantial. What's substantial?
What is deemed substantial?
So that is unfortunately a very difficult question to answer. The Housing Appeals Committee Regulations have a list of things that are generally considered to be substantial, and then a sort of opposing list of things generally considered to be insubstantial, involving increase in number of units, decrease in number of units, increase in bedrooms, decrease in bedrooms, things of that nature. There really isn't any guidance as it would relate to a modification of a stormwater feature. So it is really just going to have to get down to the board's review of whatever is submitted and its determination as to whether or not it believes what is submitted is a substantial change or an insubstantial change. And unfortunately, there really isn't anything better I can give you for guidance on that.
But that would be up to the Conservation Commission. Well, it, when, if, if it came back from the Conservation Commission, that the plan was, it met the state requirement, but there was a question of whether it met the local guidelines, it would then come back and we would have to make a determination whether or not we felt it was substantial enough to review.
Correct.
It was substantial enough that we said it has to be done in an open public hearing.
Right. So, so presumably there's a major change to the stormwater system for the project as a result of the, the review by the Conservation Commission. Then they're going to have to come back for a, a modification irrespective of whether or not it impacts a local issue, because they're going to be making major changes to the plans. But if the plans don't really change in any significant way, and there is just a very minor waiver that, you know, wasn't previously identified but is now identified, that could be an insubstantial change. So it's, it's really going to be very fact dependent.
Okay.
We have the ability to hire a third party reviewer now, why wouldn't we do it now?
Because we don't have a finalized plan. And our, without the finalized plan, which, the, the example that Mr. Freeman gave was, you know, or, you know, that was given was at risk. So the applicant seeks a special, a comprehensive permit before going forward with all the other applications within the city for, for, and PDW, everything. Basically to get, you know, in, in theory, is this a good plan? Can we move forward with this? Before they go out and spend all the money and finalize all the plans. They're basically working on schematic design. They've not come up with final construction drawings. So they are, this is, this is the scheme. This is what we want to do. If they get past the board and the board agrees that, yes, has viability within our city and everything, then they have to go ahead and pass all the other hurdles. It's not, it's not a definite that just because we said, yes, it's going to start construction tomorrow. They still have a long way to go.
So we're the keeper of all local permitting, as always, the local laws. And this can change based on, if the water and the sites are changed, then all of a sudden that's removing a step, then going to Concom and then coming back. If they just deal with it now.
If I can just offer a little bit of context in terms of the stormwater changes, the, hopefully, the piece, you know, some of the concerns. The, the major difference is that East Hampton has a three-foot groundwater separation requirement from the bottom of any stormwater system, state standards or two. So what, what our original design was, was to that two foot, not the three foot. That's the major, major issue. And so the way that is going to get solved is by raising portions of the site slightly to get above that elevation and/or flattening out the subsurface systems that we have. So they're rectangular sort of, you know, modular systems. And so they're just going to spread out as they need to, you know, below the surface to accommodate what we need to get that groundwater safe. But that's, that's the major difference. So it's the, the layout of the site isn't going to change. We've still got to meet, you know, all the stormwater standards with respect to pre-imposed flows. It's really just that groundwater separation. That's the major, you know, conundrum. So that's, but those are the two ways that we, you know, are, are seeking to solve it. Just to, so the site layout, all of the other issues are going to stay, or the, you know, site elements are going to stay unchanged.
Hearing that, I feel like it wouldn't have benefited us, benefited us just to have that review now if it's not going to change. We, the reviews happening anyways, we would get it.
We don't know the specifics of what they're going to change, because they haven't come up with their final design. And if the Conservation Commission is going to hire a third-party consultant, they already, they're going to cover what's their special, which is stormwater and groundwater and conservation. And it's, I feel like we'd be double dipping on doing the same thing again.
I was thinking, the reviewer would be for us, and it wouldn't be two different reviewers. We would have the better information.
It would be two different reviewers. Great. Okay. I'm going to speak to the expert here. What do you say?
Well, I think your attorneys have, well, both Attorney Freeman and Attorney Haverdy have outlined the process by which the Board of Appeals is to act. You know, and I think there was a conversation today based on both the audience, as well as board members and their questions being responded to by various members of the project team and the attorneys that are representing both the, the board and the applicant. I think the statements made with regards to how you are, if the sticking point seems to be stormwater, as the applicant has stated, and as Attorney Freeman has stated, those particulars are being, and, and as the chair has stated, are being reviewed by the Conservation Commission through their separate, a notice of intent process, right? And an order of conditions would be rendered for the project. That's a separate process from this comprehensive permit. I think briefly, Attorney Haverdy, in the beginning of the public hearing, also stated that you would be in risk of a final plan that presumably would be inclusive of the comments and the considerations that were, would have happened in, during the public hearing for the Conservation Commission and through that review process. As the draft conditions that, that the board may be looking at in review of the document, it, it suggests that there has been a contemplation of how to address through these conditions, the approval of this comprehensive permit through how the Conservation Commission would be required to obtain, or how the applicant would be required to obtain through the, the Conservation Commission. So that, that particular process would have reviewed the stormwater in addition to the, the impacts of the wellens and what types of mitigations would be required for that particular work. So I feel like the, the conditions that have been presented and based on the review of the, the city departments seem to have addressed the, the applicants through the draft conditions seem, it seems to be addressed based on the conversations that have happened with the city departments and their, their particular comments. And, you know, as the board reviews that, it, it seems to, to meet form of what a typical comprehensive permit would look like. I, I, I think I may have one question that is a question mark to me. And it was more so the conversation regarding the DPW, and maybe, and maybe it was clarified, it was the, the waiver being requested for number seven, which is the last page, the applicant requests that any permits or approvals required to connect to municipal water system and municipal sewer system be waived in favor of the board granting such permits and approvals. Is, does that meet, and maybe this is a question for the DPW director, if, if that, if that, if that meets the, I think, the initial concern of the DPW director, does the condition meet that? Or the, the issuance of the waiver? And I don't know if there's been conversation with the project team and the DPW director regarding the connection fees. I think that was probably the biggest question in my head.
That was his answer to it there, right, this reason?
I guess I can just, so I, I'm, I myself have a contract conversations with the DPW head about the fees for that. I do know in the draft, it was, the, the draft decision was marked by, I believe, the board's attorney has denied because it's unnecessary. So that would have been the decision made on behalf of the city and their review of that waiver request.
Okay, thank you for closing.
No problem.
Okay. So as I've got right now, additional condition for thinking about putting on here, it, the applicant's going to maintain that access road. We have that final approval of that access road will be done by the fire department. And then we have condition for review and approval from Concom for compliance with the local bylaws, relief from local bylaws if needed. If it's not compliant, it comes back to the board, board review.
I, I mean, I would add a separate condition, but it's kind of irrelevant to what we're talking about with soil and water and all that. But I think that, given what we talked about previously, it's possible to put on a condition of East Hampton residents. I mean, I think that would help alleviate some of the concerns as well, if there was a good percentage that were East Hampton residents. I know that we had spoken about that at one point. I would like that to be added.
We, we, we actually go through the decision here. There is a paragraph there about local preference.
I saw it. I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yes.
Just to clarify, and I wrote it in the draft decision as well, the local preference is allowed up to 70%, but it's not automatic. So it has to be approved by the subsidizing agency as part of the final approval process. And it's only on the initial rent, rentout of the units. So once units are turned over and, and new affordable, you know, and unit owners come in, there is no local preference on, on those, because, you know, it's, it's a much smaller number. You're basically getting one unit at a time. You can't have a local preference, you know, on the rent of, of a single unit.
Okay. That makes sense.
So if there's a conflict between local preference as put out as a condition by the zoning board and the subsidizing agency, subsidizing agency wins out on that?
Correct. And basically, what the subsidizing agency is going to require is that the city provide information of the local need, so that they can show that there is, you know, a substantial local need. And that's generally information, you know, from a housing authority or, or some similar organization that maintains a list of people who are looking for rental housing in, in the community. Submit that, and they'll review it, and hopefully they'll grant the entire 70% local preference.
Any other questions, folks, or concerns before we move to the next phase?
I have a question. Municipal fees, the applicant requests a waiver of all of these fees, added for inspection fees.
How I would read that?
So again, this was one that was going to be left up to you folks on this one. We have the recommendation from the DPW director to not waive those fees. So you see your answer as well, that the recommendation was to deny this waiver request.
I'm just thinking that, like all the chemicals, there's going to be tons of inspections, some inspections, inspectors, hey, buy an inspection, we could be, first, city.
Yep. This is the, the recommendation of the Planning Board and Town Staff to deny that request. You have the option to, to go the other direction, but not a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant, can I address the topic?
Sure.
And as a reminder, this is an affordable housing development, and so we would appreciate any consideration by the board of that, as, you know, there's public subsidies, significant amount of state and local subsidy that goes into constructing this, and every little bit helps. So, thank you.
The fee structure, obviously for plumbing and heating, plumbing.
Yeah, HVAC and, I mean, the building commissioner.
The commissioner.
Permit, you know, I mean, I don't care, because, like, from my end, you know, it's just like, where money's going to, look, money's going to come. It's just like the way money's gonna look, money's gonna come. Yeah. So, to burn it down if the town feels that it's worth it for the product we're getting, then, you know, that's fine, but I hear what you're saying, that I think that most of the uh boards think that.
Because it, because it, then the question comes down to long-term fees, like annual fire inspection or quarterly fire inspection. Are those fees to be waived? And I can't believe that that would be the long-term commitment that's.
People may be asking.
Mr. Chairman, I I can clarify, and you're right, the the request does not include ongoing annual fees or service fees. Once the property is built, it's only the uh current fees that would be related to the construction of the project.
A recommendation based off of uh Director Nudelman's recommendation. He is here in the audience if you have questions.
Greg, are you still out there? Mr. Nudelman?
Yep, still here.
Okay.
So our hesitation in waiving the connection fees for utilities for this property is based in our, the costs that we end up incurring for our staff time, um water meters for the units, um which we don't know the size and type and number yet. And th- those costs, it's only fair that those costs are borne by the developers of this project and not by water and sewer repairs across the city. So that is my basis for um, you know, being resistant to seeing those fees get waived.
Right, viable, supportable decision?
Yeah.
Any thoughts in the word? Okay. And we will, we will deny number eight. And then, uh.
Hi, sorry to bother you again. I'm getting ready to make decisions and you just said you heard any recantment about the storm water, a few other things, water pressures. As Greg Nudelman says, it's okay. I'm sure it'll be okay as long as they pay for it. But the other part of it is, I haven't heard anything about, if we look into a little farther about the traffic. I mean, I know he said it's no significant problem, but I think it's significant. And anybody that's been over to Soul Street by the Calvert Highway, uh, Variety Store knows it's a problem. They can't get out of there either. So I'm sorry, I'd like to see somebody else look into that and figure out what we're going to do about that traffic. If they're going to approve that, I still think it shouldn't be approved for a lot of reasons, but I guess that's all.
All right, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Nudelman, since you're still on the line there, we will ask you to comment concerning the water pressure in the area to be able to support the additional eighty-seven units that are being proposed.
Yeah, we we have no concerns. Um, everyone here should be aware that we occasionally supply the entire town of Southampton through the new pump station that was just built. And we do that, you know, here and there, and we have, we've, to my knowledge, we've never received a complaint regarding water pressure with that uh pump station coming on and and pressurizing the entire sound, excuse me, the entire town of Southampton. So, you know, this this building going in, it's not something we're we're going to notice as a as a public water supplier. We our system was built, although it is aged and in need of investment, our system was built to supply, pump seven million gallons of water a day when the mills were in operation. We pump about a million and a half to two million on a on a big day now. So uh there there's no concerns at all with supplying domestic water or or fire suppression to uh to this project. There's a twelve-inch um AC main out there in Main Street and um it it it's not, it's not a huge concern of ours.
And on the sewer side, is there a concern on that side?
Um, so when we, prior to we, prior to us resurfacing Wamelco Way, we extended a sanitary sewer main to the top of that road and uh left a manhole there. As this project moves along, we're going to be talking with the developer about trying to get their flow into that uh main, which will bring it directly to our interceptor located under the rail trail. So there there will be some hurdles to overcome with that, but we'd like to see that uh that connection made and this project tied into that, which we've discussed with the uh with the developers when this uh plan was first brought to us thirty months ago.
Great idea.
Yep.
I just wanted to say that we're in agreement with that, and we've been working with the city and as part of that uh infrastructure grant, we were talking about Mass Works or Housing Works would be the connection to that existing sewer line on the on Wamelco Way. And also, I think, uh, the city has some other need that would want to be routed that way too, so that would be part of that grant for sure. So we are in support of that.
Um, Mr. Nudelman, obviously, the the portion of South Main Street, I believe, is state highway. Am I correct in that?
Yes. Yes, it is.
And so the the design and and support of the traffic on on that being a state highway falls onto the state.
Yeah, that is correct.
And, you know, at what point does does that road turn into a city road?
College Highway Variety, South Street.
As South. And the city or the state is going to have to review this uh influx of traffic? Or will the state have to, it's going to be subject, it'll have to be approved, all the curb cuts, everything along those lines, correct?
Yes, they will need a state highway access permit for installation of utilities, driveways, things of that nature.
Isn't that your restriction falls on the state? Thank you. Okay. So we're, electricity, we're fine with. What other utilities are we concerned about? Internet? We all zoom back and forth to each other. All right. Any other questions or concerns from the board? Do we feel we need any peer review on anything that's been presented beyond what we know is going to happen with the Conservation Commission and their peer review?
I I think stronger review would be helpful, but if that's I'm just one person on this board.
You're allowed to say what you'd like. Well, this is democracy.
Was something that I kind of thought before, before this letter was brought to us, and I again, I I feel like I'm kind of getting mixed messages over what our purpose is. Comprehensive permit is, we're in charge of everything, but yet we're just approving a concept, that's what I've been told tonight. I mean, in my mind, we're approving something that's, we should have a good idea of what it is we're approving and the storm water, it needs to be redesigned to accommodate any stormwater issues that the third party review or noticed, then obviously we need to know about that. So that'd be my slide. Again, I'm one vote. So if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, just so I I understand what uh the board's request here as well, that's what we're going for. Well, the condition we're looking to put in here with CONCOM is essentially saying we're going for review and approval, what we're approving here tonight is what we expect to ultimately be approved as well at CONCOM. If they have to make, we are approving, at least it's in front of us, and if we're, the changes end up being substantial, it does come back to us. We do get to review that again. So we're saying yes to what's in in front of us, what's been submitted. But that's not the case. There are substantial changes. It does come back to this board for review. So the idea is that this is going to Conservation Commission when they are, a separate applicant goes to the uh Conservation Commission. They're going to do their whole process with it and they do their approval, the condition we're putting in here as well, is that they're going to review that it complies with local ordinance as well. It's very likely that they are going to hire uh an outside consultant to review this, uh and review the storm water as well. So if we were to do a consultant, review this, it would then go to CONCOM. They'd likely hire a consultant to review it. They then might make changes based on the consultant, and then if we have consultant, we're making changes. And now there's two sets of plans at two different boards, and I don't think the city has benefited from that because it's going to make it a little bit more confusing in that one as opposed to sending it to one body typically handle these things and has that expertise.
Essentially deferring to their expertise.
Sure. But I mean, the the draft letter that that are put together, there's a lot of pieces in there that we're basically taking ownership of some elements of stormwater runoff. There'll be, there'll be no seventation of wetlands and water bodies. Discharge, discharge types for surface runoff leading to property, we have as a statement in here. It's a whole section of wetlands, environmental stormwater conditions. Yes, it mentions CONCOM as well, so a series of other items that, the way it's written, feels like it's, we're signing off on it. We're saying, oh yeah, green light on it, when I don't think we have enough information to verify that these things are true.
So we're seeing, you know, like if CONCOM.
But the way this is written, that isn't clear. I don't know if we have to take pieces out of it.
So, so here, here's how I I look at this. Is the the design has been presented currently. Uh, we're approving the design that's been presented. If that design, I think we're saying conservation, they're going to say it doesn't meet the requirements. So they're going to send it back saying, you know, they're going to get their review and then they're going to, they're going to work on the design, come up with a final design, which probably felt more than likely come back here to have to amend the application. Because at that point, what we've approved as a schematic design isn't actually what's going to be built, so it has to come back.
You say, is it really up to us to make their decisions for?
Right.
And if, and I've written, it feels like there are elements in here. I agree that we're.
And and so what I'm saying is that at that point, our con- Conservation Commission is, well, we deem as our expertise. They're going out, they're, they have their requirements. They're going to make sure that the design meets or exceeds the requirements that they want. At which point you will come back to us for final blessing. But we are giving permission for it to move forward for them to go to conservation. This is going to be passed along to the concrete. I believe a letter that's in conservation, but we can also stipulate that.
So we have uh, McNeddon, does his hand up?
Yep. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I I just thought it'd be, I just thought, just wanted to add that uh myself and our city engineer, Diane Rossini, will be watching this um stormwater approval move through the Conservation Commission process and 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 be keeping an eye on the peer review to make sure it's um thorough and 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 really gets gets to where it needs to for our um to be in compliance with our stormwater regulations. So it's not, it's not going through without DPW and um city officials' eyes being on it. Just want the board to be aware of that.
So we're not saying, yeah, go ahead and build it.
No.
We're just saying, let's let this move to the next step. I think, right?
Okay. I think.
First hurdle in the race.
And I think some of these are even just kind of, they're under that section, wetlands, environment, stormwater conditions, but some of them, again, are are just kind of boilerplate things in there, such as no dumping of leaves, grass clippings or brush or other debris into the wetland resource area. Associated buffer zone, something of snow into wetland resource areas, also prohibited, something like that is relatively uncontroversial, and I uh think the board may want to take ownership over a condition like that. I think that that might make sense. You certainly add additional uh conditions if you have concerns about um, but we do know that there is that next step that it is going to be going to, that it has to um get approval from CONCOM as well. How do we make the determination of factual finding nineteen? It's been designed in compliance with the stormwater management standards. How do we keep that in there? We don't actually know.
I would just add, for us to get through the city and conservation, it's going to have to meet stormwater standards. There's there's no, there's no way around that, really. So it's kind of, it's going to have to.
It's going to have to, how can it be listed as a factual finding tonight? How can I hopefully say yes, it meets that?
Not up to us to say yes. It's up to us to say that's under the CONCOM Conservation Commission.
I understand that.
Speak up, I can't hear you. Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Oh, I'm, I was saying that it, we're not make, we're not, this is fact. We're saying this is, we are saying that this we are deferring to the expertise of the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Freeman. We're good.
Yeah, I I understand and appreciate those comments. Um, this has come up in past projects. I would be perfectly happy, number one, you don't need to make that finding if that makes you more comfortable. Number two, I would prefer perfectly fine if you simply make a finding um that says uh it has been represented by the applicant's engineer that and then it's properly stated in number nineteen. You could, you could use the language that's a twenty-one, the board heard testimony from the applicant's engineer that the stormwater man- management has been designed, et cetera.
Yes.
Say, if we'd, we'd like, we could, if it's time to just go through the decision, this will give, rather than kind of jumping around through the decision, we can go point by point and see, does the board agree? Does the board disagree? That way, again, uh we like, do we like that idea?
Do is this something we should close the hearing for, or is it still better to keep it open?
I can on that one.
If the board if the board is anticipating additional testimony from others, then the board should keep the public hearing open. But if the board is also now navigating um a a draft set of conditions, then the presumption is you have what you have to understand that you may be approaching a place where you're looking at an an approval with conditions.
The concerns have been presented to us.
Correct.
So we know them. Do we anticipate new concerns that haven't been presented to us being presented?
We may, as we go through this decision, find something that does raise a concern for the board, so it could.
So at this point, let's leave it open. We're going to leave it open. We will review the document. If anything comes up, then we still want good scanning. If nothing comes up, then we can go ahead and move to the next step. Hey. I don't know. You want to read or you want me to read?
I'll do it. You let me know when you.
All right. So we're reading a draft decision for the uh uh application for a comprehensive permit, uh forty B. The applicant is community builders. And the property is three eighty-five to three ninety-one Main Street in the city of East Hampton. Today is September tenth, or eleventh, one thousand twenty-four, so that's the first change. Uh, procedural history, an application for a comprehensive permit was received by the city of East Hampton, zoning board of appeals on or about April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The application process proposes the development and or rehabilitation of one hundred and twenty-seven rental apartments within
four residential structures located in three eighty-five, three ninety-one Main Street. The board's public hearing on the application was duly opened on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Due to an effect in the public notice, the hearing was subsequently renoticed and the hearing was reopened on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And was continued to the following dates of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four and today, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
May I make a point of order?
Yes.
Can we, we not necessarily have to read through all the ones that we don't think apply to the concerns that have been raised and just go to those?
I I would recommend that the board take the time to to go through these. I know it's it's a lot, but it will we'll we'll know everyone has has seen them and then the public will also kind of hear all that as well.
Sure. Okay, the project is located at three eighty-five, three ninety-one Main Street in East Hampton. The property is currently the site of college highway apartments, a forty unit affordable housing development that will be rehabilitated to as a separate phase of the project, continuing counting towards the one hundred and twenty-seven units of the total project. The property is located in an R fifteen and R thirty-five zoning district. Nearby uses consist of commercial and residential uses on Main Street. Yeah, provided various materials, reports, studies and revised plans throughout the course of the public hearing of the application. During the public hearing, the applicant was assisted primarily by the representation, representative in-house representative Julia Scannell, senior development project manager. It's counsel Peter Freeman Esquire of Esquire Law Group, Freeman Law Group, excuse me. It's landscape architect Jeff Squire of Berkshire Design Group and architect Brad Hutchinson of Q and Riddle Architects. Transportation engineer, uh, Michael Wolfirst of Bowman and its local partner Mark Lumsley of Kestrel Land Trust. The board utilized the services of Paul Haverty Esquire of Blatman, Bobrowski, Haverty and Silverstein as its chapter forty B technical consultant through a grant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. During the public hearing, there was significant public input. The board heard input from a butters and or other interested persons throughout the hearing process. On August seventh, twenty twenty-four, the board conducted a site visit. In attendance were members of the board, John Atwater, Jim Garceau, Robert Ferris, Anthony Carrera, an additional Dylan Maxfield, associate planner of the city of East Hampton. Uh, Julia Scannell of Community Builders, Jeff Squires of Kestrel Land of that's of Berkshire, of Berkshire. And not of Kestrel Land Trust.
It's Jeff Squire with Kestrel Land Trust. Did I have that wrong?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I don't think Jeff, were you there?
No, that was Mark.
That was Mark.
That was there.
Okay.
Uh, and I will add that.
Yep. Uh, Gwen Fern of Berkshire Design Group, Charles Roberts of Q and Riddle and members of the public were also in attendance. Jurisdictional findings. The applicant has demonstrated its eligibility to submit an application for comprehensive permit to the board and the development fulfills the minimum project eligibility requirement set forth by four seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot zero four sub one as follows. The applicant is a nonprofit entity and has indicated it its application that it may transfer the comprehensive permit to a single purpose, a limited liability company that will conform in the limited dividend requirements of general law forty B, thus establishing it as a limited dividend entity. The applicant is a principal address of one eight five Dartmouth Street, Austin, Massachusetts. The applicant has received written determination of project eligibility from the executive office of housing and living communities dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four under the low income housing tax credit program, a copy of which was provided through the board with the decision on applica- application of sorry, that's that, of original application. The applicant provided a copy of a purchase and sale agreement between Kestrel Land Trust and Edward C. Fedor and Robert C. Fedor and a copy of a memorandum of understanding between Kestrel Land Trust and the applicant outlining the terms of the conveyance to the applicant. Thus, the applicant has shown evidence of site control sufficient to qualify as an applicant for a comprehensive permit. The applicant has agreed to execute regulatory agreement that limits its annual distributions in accordance with the general law forty B and the regulations of seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot zero zero and guidelines adapted thereunder by the E O H L C. The city of East Hampton did not meet the statutory minimum set forth by general law forty B at the time of the original application as was filed. At the time of the filing the application, the number of low or moderate housing moderate income housing units in the city constituted seven point one two percent of the total year-round housing units in the city based on most recent publicly available copy of the E O H L C subsidized housing inventory dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Thus, the city did does not meet the ten percent statutory minimum. The city does not have the information that there are existing affordable housing units that are on sites that compromise more than one and one-half percent of the total land area of the city that is zoned for residential, commercial or industrial use, excluding landowners by the United States, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any publicly sub publicly politically subdivision thereof. Should have brought my glasses to me. The granting of the comprehensive permit will not result in the commencement of construction of lower moderate income housing units on the site comprising more than three tenths of one percent of land in the city or ten acres, whichever is larger, zoned for residential, commercial and industrial use. Excluding land owned by the United States, the city, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any politically subdivized subdivision thereof in any one calendar year. The city does have an approved housing production plan pursuant of seven sixty C M R five six dot zero three, but was not certified at as of the filing of the comprehensive.
You're welcome. The city has not achieved recent progress towards its housing unit minimum pursuant to seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot oh three. The project as submitted does not constitute a large project pursuant to seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot oh three. The applicant's comprehensive permit application does not constitute a related application pursuant to seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot oh three. Factual findings, location of the project. The project is located at three eighty-five and three ninety-one Main Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. The property has frontage on Main Street. The property is located within the R fifteen and R thirty-five zoning districts. Civil engineering, site design and stormwater impact. The board engaged in review of potential civic engineering, site design and stormwater impact of the project. The project will will connect to the East Hampton municipal water and sewer systems. Input from the East Hampton Department of Public Works was provided to ensure sufficient capacity exists to allow connection to the municipal municipal systems. The applicant proposes to construct a hundred and seventeen, seventy-five new and forty-two existing parking spaces for the project, a ratio of slightly under point nine two parking spaces per unit. On-site amenities will include recreational areas and structures as shown on the approved plans referenced below. Approximately twenty-one point four percent of the site will consist of impervious surface with the remainder consisting of previous surface. Impervious.
Do we think that number is going to change with the fire department, uh, the changing of the the road?
No, because the road, the the addition that they're doing is still considered per- incurred, considered pervious.
Pervious.
I follow that.
The board, the board finds that the total amount of impervious area is acceptable. The board finds that the landscaping proposed by the applicant and as conditioned by this decision is sufficient in like of the site disturbance that the project will entail. The landscape design objective for the proposed development will be to enhance the built environment through the creation of a sustainable landscape that blends into the site's natural surroundings. The overall design will emphasize the use of low maintenance, native plantings and strive to integrate the proposed development's needs into the site's surrounding environment. The proposed proposed landscapes will be consistent with the quality and quantity compared to other similar development. Now, this is stormwater management has been designed in compliance with the mass stormwater management standards in accordance with three ten C M R ten point oh five six A through Q and defined in detail in the mass part of the E P stormwater management handbook. The system incorporates B M Ps to facilitate the T S A, T S S removal, penetration and detonation of stormwater flow, detention of stormwater flows.
So we're striking this, correct? We're we're, well, I I don't know if we're striking it. I think what we're doing is we're going to add a line before it that says the board heard testimony from the applicant.
Got it.
And the stormwater management plan has been designed in compliance.
Yeah, got that.
Okay. Um, the project as conditioned herein will address the lack of affordable rental units in the city. The board heard testimony from the applicant and the board's traffic consultant, including the applicant's traffic impact study prepared by Bowman, that the project is expected to result in approximately fifty vehicle trips during the weekday morning peak hour and approximately fifty-eight vehicle trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour. Is that? The board finds that the conditions imposed in section four of this decision are necessary in order to address local concerns. The board finds that such conditions will not render the project uneconomic. To the extent that conditions may render the project uneconomic as defined in seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot oh two, the board finds that the local concerns outweigh the political, the potential benefits of the proposed affordable units. The board finds that granting certain waivers from local bylaws and regulations is acceptable, even though granting waivers may have an adverse impact on local concerns. The board acknowledges concerns raised by butters and other interested parties about the project's potential incompatibility with the budget of residential uses, including concerns relating to increased traffic and parking demand. The board has addressed these concerns by the imposition of appropriate conditions. The board further finds that conditions detailed below appropriately address these matters of local concern in a matter that outweighs the regional need for affordable housing.
I meant, do we have any conditions related to traffic and parking demand? I don't think we have any in there. So I don't know if we put that language there or line of concerns.
Yeah. I, if there are, if we do not have any specific conditions.
Then we can make reference to conditions below.
I'm going to go ahead and just remove that line, including concerns relating to increased traffic and parking demand. Then we'll continue to read from there. The board has addressed these concerns with that removal.
Okay. So that last sentence of that paragraph would still stand. The board finds the conditions that the conditions imposed below address local and regional housing needs while properly protecting valid issues of local concern.
Yes, and that referencing all other conditions.
Last paragraph before conditions, the board finds that the construction of the project as conditioned will be consistent with local
I have another question. A big part of the project is the conservation aspect. There's no mention of any of this factual findings or decisions about any other element, so maybe I'll try to build that in somehow. I mean, that's a huge sales point of this.
That is, that is a very
Yeah, we, uh, how would we want to word that? Do we want to say that the the board finds that this uh, application is in line with the city's open space plan? How do we want to word that?
The how do we just word this? Um, maybe just in the descriptions of the applicants. Yeah. The, the, um, we're thinking that the created that
We we could just say, um, board finds that the proposal will add, and what is it, forty, forty-five, forty acres of open space? Do we, do we know?
Preserve.
Yeah.
Reserve.
Forty-one acres.
Okay. Uh, finds that, so we like that the board finds that this proposal will preserve forty-one acres of
Set fine. The board acknowledges that this will preserve forty-one acres of
This, uh, this has sign off from all five board members, so everyone will get a final chance to review the language. And then we can, it's administrative matter to make minor changes to to any sort of wording on this as well. Carry on or? Well, it's, yeah, because the next topic is conditions. And so these are just general conditions all through here or is this just? This is just this is not conditions, conditions aren't to the very end. Decision on waivers.
Yeah, these are all your conditions.
These are just all the conditions?
Yeah.
Basically just right now? Since there's twenty-eight of these. Can we continue the hearing? What's that? Can we continue the hearing? Uh, do this, and it's going to take a while, we're only on fourth pages. We can still, we still have fifteen minutes if we want to go through, see what we can get to. And then this is something that we can continue it to our next hearing, which would be October ninth, I want to say. And October as well.
So here, let's let's look at it this way. What our next Z B A meeting is the twenty-fifth. Do we have any applicants for the twenty-fifth?
Yes, we have three applications on there, so then it would be the ninth.
I definitely second that. This is pretty, pretty hefty.
Yeah, and and you've all read it, but to read it out loud and really stop and think about it and have conversation. It's very important.
But obviously you don't want to do it when, you know, it's getting late and people are probably not thinking so much about it, you know, as deeply, I don't know. I think it might be better to do it at a fresh.
Maybe this could be a different stopping point to starting a whole new one to do this.
Up to the board?
Thirteen minutes, we go.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
The holder of this comprehensive permit is the Community Builders Incorporated, although the Community Builders Incorporated intends to transfer the permit to a relative related entity, single purpose limited liability company that will comply with applicable limited dividend requirements. The property is defined as the property located at three hundred and eighty-five, three hundred and ninety-one Main Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, shown on a plan entitled three hundred and eighty-five, three ninety-one Main Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Berkshire Design Group. The project is defined as all features shown on the plans listed below in condition A dot two, or as otherwise required by this comprehensive permit. Except as may be provided for in the following conditions or in the final plans referenced below, the project shall be constructed substantially substantially in conformance with the plans and drawings listed below in this citation eight point two, which for purposes of this comprehensive permit shall be considered the approval plans for the project. Minor changes to the approval plans, for example, changes that do not materially materially affect the location but or increase the height of massing of the structures or increase the number of units contained in the residential buildings shall be submitted to the city planner who shall have the authority to approve such changes as immaterial changes. If the city planner determines that the proposed changes do not conform to the requirements of this comprehensive permit, he shall so notify the applicant and the applicant shall bring the plans into conformance with this design, with this decision or seek a modification in accordance in accordance with seven sixty C M R fifty-six dot oh five. The approval plans consist of following plan, following plan set from Berkshire Design Group. Three hundred and eighty-five, three ninety-one Main Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, revisions July July ninth, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Berkshire Design Group. The provisions from July, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Berkshire Design Group and consists of the following sheets. Um, number hundred locust, locust plan, one oh one existing conditions plan, one oh two site preparation and demolition plan, one eleven site layout and materials plan, one twenty-one utility.
I think that's plan.
Yeah. Uh, one thirty-one grading and drainage plan, one forty-one planting plan, one fifty-one photometric plan and five oh one, two and three are site details, as are five oh four and five oh five. And L C one oh one college highway apartment site plans. Architectural details contained in the plans three eighty-five Main Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, prepared by Keen Riddle Architects dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, cover sheet dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of the following sheets. Sheet A one point one building information, one point two floor plans, building A, one point three floor plans, building A again, that's the Department of Redundancy Department.
Um.
I could pull this up, the board wants to see those plans. They're, they're in the, uh, the plan set.
Yeah, they don't, all the A's don't fit on one plan, so there's two plans.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, one point four floor plans, building B and C, one point five floor plans, building A, B and C, two point one exterior elevations, buildings B and C, and three point one building sections. The applicant intends to transfer the comprehensive permit to a single purpose entity which shall be a limited dividend entity as required by chapter forty B and such limited dividend entity. Its successors and assigns shall comply with limited dividend and other applicable requirements of chapter forty B and the regulations adopted thereunder. The project shall consist of not more than one hundred and twenty-seven units, eighty-seven newly constructed units and the rehabilitation rehabilitation of forty existing apartment units within four residential structures and other related residential amenities, inclusive of a community building, all as shown on the approval plans. The project shall consist of no more than one hundred and ninety-six. There shall be a minimum of one hundred and seventeen, seventy-five new and forty-two existing parking spaces, inclusive those required, tiny space. Unless otherwise. Is it? Okay, yeah, okay, yeah. Pursuant to the waiver list submitted to the board and attached heretofore as exhibit A, the applicant had requested and the board has granted those waivers from the East Hampton zoning ordinance and other local bylaws as regulations is specified therein. No waivers are granted from requirements that are beyond the purview of G L C forty B. Um, no waiver or a permit or inspection fees has been granted except as specifically set forth there herein. Any subsequent revision to the approved plans, approved plans, including but not limited to revisions in the final plans referenced below that require additional or more expansive waivers of any local bylaws or regulations must be approved by the board in accordance with seven sixty C M R fifty-six point oh five. Except except as otherwise specifically provided herein, where this decision provides for the submission of plans or other documents for approval by the building commissioner or other city departments, the city planner or applicable department head will use reasonable efforts to review and provide a written response within forty-five days following submission. For submissions that require assistance from an outside consultant as determined by the city planner or applicable department head, the thirty-day time period shall not begin until the consultant's fee has been fully funded by the applicant. When forty-five days elapsed without a response as foresaid, said plans or documents shall be deemed approved. Comprehensive permit may be subsequently assigned or transferred pursuant to seven sixty C M R fifty-six point oh five. The pledging of the property as security under any conventional loan financing terms as set forth in the financing entities loan departments or as any foreclosure sale pursuant to the same shall not be, will not constitute an assignment or transfer under this paragraph. The provisions of this comprehensive permit decision and conditions shall be binding upon the successors and assigns of the applicant and the obligation shall run with the land. In the event that the applicant sells, transfers or assigns its interest in the development, this comprehensive permit shall be binding upon the purchaser, transferee or assigning and any successor purchases, transferees or assignees. The applicant limited dividend restrictions shall apply to the owner of the project regardless of sale, transfer or assignment of the project. Sidewalks, driveways, roads, utilities, drainage systems and other onsite infrastructure shown on the approval plans as serving the project shall remain private in perpetuity and the city shall not have now or in the future any legal responsibility for the operation or maintenance of the infrastructure, including but not limited to snow removal, landscaping maintenance and hydrant, hydra maintenance. In this regard, the proposed site access road with the project shall not be dedicated to or accepted by the student. Unless otherwise implicated herein, the board may designate an agent to review and approve matters on the board's behalf subsequent to this. That brings us to affordability.
Uh, I think a good, good
I'd say that's a very good step. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
For our next meeting on this, um, we, we've been doing kind of flexibility for no one, the ninth, since it'll work for everybody, October ninth.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, a couple of things, again, Peter Freeman for the applicant. Um, I cannot do October ninth. I have another hearing previously scheduled. Um, and it's an in-person hearing, so I couldn't juggle two Zoom meetings. And also, and I know it will sound like an imposition, but we did lose a month when there were problems last month and you know, time is always of the essence on these projects to make sure you can file with the next funding round. So I'm just wondering if it could be a special date, um, you know, sometime uh between now and the end of the month, unfortunately, on September twenty-fifth, it sounds like you're busy and I have another hearing that night, but um, I, I just ask for my clients sake on their behalf that maybe we look at possible different date, especially since I can't do it on October ninth.
Do you pull it up to October first?
We have for Wednesdays, we have the eighteenth week from now, or we have the second of October, Wednesday, October second. Unless we want to maintain a Wednesday.
If we want to maintain a Wednesday, so. Here are folks available on the
Yes. I know, I'm sorry, I don't think so. Yeah, I should have asked after six, yes.
Actually, we can tonight.
So we come tonight, we come tonight.
Okay, much appreciated.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to September eighteen. So again.
A second.
All favor.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
To bring it true, make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. All favor. So moved.